Open up our pledge. Motion by both.
Second.
Second by Quinn, all in favor. Six. Need a motion to approve the present agenda that's presented. If you guys got any questions, that's time to ask abstained from whatever you need to abstain from.
I'll move to approve it and I'm going to abstain from trace number four, seven, five, two, five.
Do a motion by Quinn, second by Bo. All in favor. Period six. Moving on to presentations, get the steering committee in.
The steering committee has met about four times. We have Rachel Updegrove who's here. We also have David Bixler, I won't push you guys on the spot if you want to settle a little bit. The board has in front of them, um, current draft of what the committee has talked about, dealing with improvements and recommendations for the track. They've worked with the architect, Chris Davis, um, Tim Croft is here. And he's also here to answer any questions you might have. Rachel, are you okay in talking a little bit about it?
Sure.
Just they have it in different phases and what they would recommend and, um, obviously these are recommendations from hours they've put in. And some of you have been attending that. Lot of discussion about the restrooms and just, you know, what the budget will allow us to do, so.
Yes, don't you need to go up there or anywhere?
You can if you want. And just look at that screen now.
Well, hi, everyone. I'm Rachel. I think I know most of you in here, but, um, I, as long as it, as well as with our steering committee, as Dr. Rob mentioned, we've been meeting the last several months, once or twice a month to, um, work with everyone to kind of pinpoint what we felt we could do best with the 2.5 million budget if the bond is passed, or I should say when the bond is passed. So what you kind of see in front of you is an example of phase one and phase two, or what we've kind of decided to, to call the phases. The goal would be phase two. It's, you can see in the image you have in front of you, it shows the field with the, the graphics with, um, all the bells and whistles. The, the asphalt has the synthetic rubber on it. However, we wanted to be a little conservative with the budget and make sure that, um, we didn't promise the community anything too much. That wasn't going to happen once we start getting in bids and making the contracts with our, um, expenses. So that first phase one is what we will push to have approved. Um, and that it does not include the Tipton logo on the field. Dr. Rob, you mentioned like adding the letters Tipton, it's 2,000 a letter.
Two thousand a letter.
Two thousand a letter, so, um, so that first image just doesn't include all those bells and whistles to be conservative with our budget. But obviously the ultimate goal would be to have that image too, and it sounds like it's doable. So what we're hoping to present to the community is, are these pictures, and we hope to make sure that the community understands that this bond would go to capital improvements. I know there's been some talk on different ways to spend that money, and it's just to understand and making sure the community understands it has to go to the capital improvements, which would be your facilities and, you know, your more, your overhead projects. But as you all are aware, and I'm sure you've seen here, this track and field will not only beautify the community, but it would also allow the school district to partner with, um, TRA and different organizations in the community for different sports. Be safer for band and track, we could host track meets. And, um, so yeah, the overall goal, I think, of everybody on the committee is to, uh, make sure that we are providing the best community we can for, for you and our students. And as you all, I assume, agree, being on the school board, so. Um, any other, any questions or Dr. Rob, did I not mention anything?
No, did you talk a little bit about the restrooms and why that kind of?
Oh, yeah, of course. So, yeah, the restrooms would be updated. That was something that was talked about quite a bit in all of our committee meetings.
That might be helpful for you.
Thank you. How, um, that's a need, the concession stands, that whole fieldhouse area, it's just, it needs updating. So, um, $500,000 of the 2.5 would go to that renovation alone. So the 2 million goes to the, to the field. Um, and that's something in our committee meetings that a lot of the members expressed was something they were hearing out in the community is that we need a new restroom, we need to upgrade the concessions. And we had Coach Duke in a lot of our meetings, and he was very helpful on helping us determine, you know, what the students are saying and what the students need as they're using these facilities as well. So, any questions?
Is there, um, when you talk about phase two, um, does the, do you believe that the 2.5 million was up to work phase two?
Because the, um, the bids aren't out yet. So the, the architect is making an estimate of what we would have. He's estimating what the restroom improvements might cost, might cost in the fieldhouse. He's estimating what the bids would come in, um, for the, for the turf field. I think the overall goal is what you see on the far right, getting all the way to there, but it's going to be dependent on how those bids come in. Is that, Tim, what do you think?
That is correct. You know, we believe we're pretty conservative with our numbers. However, if we put it out in bid, it depends upon the current market at the time, where we're hopeful that we can get the full package. And that's what we like to do, um, but knowing that we don't want to sacrifice the first part of the package for the second part of the bid with alternates in mind. So that's kind of, so ultimately, we like to hit the right thing.
And I think we'd like to see some local support as well. You know, this doesn't, we had some discussion about, you know, does, uh, is there a local organization or, or business that wants to name this field? And have their name on the field, you know, do they want to contribute significantly enough to be able to do that? You know, there's Staples Center, there's all kinds of places that are named, you know, for pro sports teams, and sometimes there are high school teams are named that way. You know, maybe we want to think about some naming rights and that contribution gets us to phase two and gets it done. But, uh, that's something the board, we got to decide they want to do. The architect feels fairly confident that phase one could get done within our budget. Phase two would possibly within our budget. But that's, uh, um, like I said, there's some variation in the markets and, and who's going to bid and, you know, what's the rate going to be at the time you bid it. That's the bad thing about going into this is, you know, you don't know where it's going to end up.
Yeah, and that was one thing I know some of the other committee members had mentioned in our meetings was we don't want to promise phase two and then we get the numbers and, you know, then we're going, okay, well, we have to take this off, we have to take this off. So we kind of started, or we did start with the basics.
I think that's smart. I mean, just when, since I've been on board for a while, just hearing about how bond issues were hap- happened in the past or what's been asked. I think that's been a consistent issue is that something was promised that wasn't met. So it's smart to say that we're going to do this and if we can do now.
So when you do the, the phase one and you go back and say you have to wait a year or something to put the logos and that kind of thing, what's involved in that, Tim?
Um, if you're looking for the, for the logo of the 50-yard line, pretty much they come in, it comes in as a, as a single, a single sample. Basically, so it comes in and they can cut it into the existing field, so it's a pretty, pretty low-key situation. Even if it was to be added, they'll still put out all the turf and then come in and, and, and cut it in and overlay it. Basically cut out the, the portion and set, and set that in. So really, there's no difference, there's no, uh, there's no funding being spent for phase one that wouldn't be for phase two, I guess what I'm saying. For the colored end zones, that would probably be different. They'd simply come in and roll those sections of turf up and then replace them with the letters. And so, um, you know, it'd be minimal, minimal change and minimal disruptions.
You remember our turf over there on the playground, they did the same thing, they dropped the carton of it and they sewed that in.
Yeah, okay.
Would it, is there a price difference in colored turf without the lettering and then insert the lettering?
If we, typically not, if you go with whatever vendor you choose, if we, they have standard colors, whether it's green, white, black, yellow, red. Uh, if you choose their standard colors, uh, with their color palette, it's usually not, not a difference at all. For, if you did just the colored end zones, if you, if you selected their color red, that's typically not, um, an add, uh, but the lettering would be. And so again, we could potentially go with, if you're, if, if their standard red color is acceptable to the board to match the Tipton color, uh, you could go with the red color and then come back in and cut the white letters in or black letters in.
And there would really be a cost to that, maybe not if we, if we did that color.
Right, that color would say, that may not be an add-on at all, or exactly.
Good question. I, I saw in the Tipton Times, uh, not long ago, maybe a few months back, they talked about the fieldhouse building and when that was originally put in. It was about, back in 1982, and a lot of organizations here in town, I think Alliance Club was one of them, and I read, came together and put that building together for Tipton School District. 1982 is a long time ago. Coach Duke, do you want to talk a little bit about how that building's being used and what you see in that building? And your, kind of your vision for how that ought to be? Cause I, uh, a few, a couple of weeks ago, I went in and watched Coach Duke, Coach Duke wear our kids out to great enthusiasm on a Sunday night. Going from running the field to weaving, uh, uh, hurdles to going back inside and saying, I think if I got into about a quarter of this workout, I'd be dead. To going in and power cleaning, to, uh, practicing power cleaning, then power cleaning, and then steadily stacking on weights along about seven or eight different stations with the kids and almost 40 kids turning out on a Sunday night. Coach is, I told him, I said, I think he created a cult down here, Coach. And so, Coach, do you want to share anything just about that building and what you see?
Uh, the fieldhouse is currently being used for any sport athlete three days a week. Wednesday morning at six, Friday morning at six, and Sunday evening at seven. Currently, we have 40 to 45 athletes showing up on a regular basis at those times and showing up on time. As we look forward and look at the number of athletes that are interested in participating in not just fall sports, but in other sports as well. When we look at the fieldhouse, currently the locker room section houses about 32, 33 kids. And the, and that's the main varsity locker room. The middle school locker room area, which is that front room, has around 19 to 20 lockers. Uh, I could tell you right now, just with the number of kids that are showing up, we're, we're certainly short in that realm. We currently, those young men and women, we have boys and girls who show up to workout. They are doing a lot with three racks. Usually it's four kids per rack, we're putting about eight or nine kids per rack, and they're still getting it done in time. And three or four bars, two benches to lay on the bench, we carry benches in and out of the rooms to work on it. So despite whatever's there, they're, they're getting it done. Med balls that have holes in them that are just, you know, need to be probably discarded. And some weights that probably need to be discarded, and nobody complains about it, they just come in and work. My, my thought is that with the amount of enthusiasm that we have, that should be a weight room that anybody can use in the district all the time, and it should be top-notch, to be honest with you. I'm not usually one that likes to go on the, uh, lower middle end of side of things. I usually like to provide the best that I possibly can. When we talk about, when we talked as a steering committee about the bathrooms, you know, you have over 70 athletes that use it during the football season. And one stall, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't really work, right? Couple of year notes, that doesn't really work. You have, you're going to have kids either going to the other side or trying to go back to the school or do whatever. So making this space work for the number of student athletes that we have there needs to be a priority. And you can look at the, the fieldhouse rendering that he has blown up there, that we need more storage in there, uh, just, just for the football and track side of things. But as far as the, the fieldhouse goes, it's my, we've done some updates to it, we've painted it. We've moved some rubber flooring around so we could protect the floors and whatnot. We've had a couple of water leaks in there, thankfully we didn't lose too much. You know, we shut those off in time, but I think it's time to probably be updated and, and bring, brought forward to where we're at with the number of kids that we have using it on a routine basis, you know? And, you know, my two cents, this is extra Dr. Rob, you didn't ask for it, but an all-weather surface allows you to say yes, when a lot of times you have to say no. You know, if it rains on Tuesday and people want to get out of the field, you're like, no, you can't get out there, you're going to tear it up. Well, a field like this can handle 10 inches of rain and two hours later it's dry, three hours later it's dry. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So it gives you the opportunity to say yes, to ban, to PE, to anybody who wants to get on there if time's available, instead of saying no. No creates a lot of problems, but if you have the ability to say yes, you're just opening up opportunities for folks, so. If anybody wants to see the fieldhouse, I'm welcome to, I'll be happy to take you through it. Looks pretty good. If anybody wants to come and work out with the boys and the girls, 6:00 AM Wednesday and Friday morning. I think some people in the room were invited at some point in time, so not to mention any names. As you welcome to show up.
Coach Duke, can you kind of talk about the, what you had mentioned about the, uh, scoreboard and how you previously had sold sponsorships or?
Sure, no problem.
Just the potential we talked about.
Yeah, oh, a lot of businesses are very much interested in, wait for the sirens to sound. Advertising on a scoreboard. Typically, you may get somebody that sponsored $25,000, $5,000 a year for five years, and they can sell sponsorship ads on the scoreboards, and that can help offset the costs. It's just small panels that can be added, but it's, you know, a daily advertisement for that, for that company. If you go anywhere in the area, you'll see that on every scoreboard you go through. If you want to go to California, there's a big one that says burgers right on the top of it, right? If you want to go down into Wordsville, you'll see six to eight of them that are there. Anywhere that you go, you'll see those businesses that are advertising on there, so it's another great way to, to help offset the cost. There's also fields like Lamar. If you go to Lamar, you'll see advertisement right on the field for the companies, and it stays on there the entire time they have the turf. So it helps offset the cost.
I think our committee, kind of our next steps, which crunch time now, but we are working on getting signs that we hope to put out in yards and to help promote this bond issue for April 4th. Probably see some stuff pop up on social media, just to try and get the news out, because I think what, from what I've understood, it's, you know, getting the voters out there. There's been times, you know, things have passed maybe not due to lack of support, but lack of numbers, the voters. So I think these next few weeks, it's going to be kind of the committee's goal to just spread the word and get as many people as we can out to vote.
I do have one question. If 500,000 won't cover the restroom renovation, something's going to have to sacrifice something, so does the track weight?
So does the track?
Weight?
Weight? Oh, I see. Um. Good question. I don't.
We haven't had that discussion.
Yeah, we haven't had that discussion, but I don't. I assume with these conservative numbers, I guess the hope is that we aren't over budget. And we can at least replace the track, maybe what waits is the, the rubber asphalt. But from what I understand as well, this track needs replaced regardless whether the bond passes or not.
The rules, you're like. There is some contingency built in there. I think it's close to 200,000, I want to say 160, 200,000 built into this project. And again, because we don't see the actual bids, Chris is using, you know, other projects that are in close time proximity and his, his relationship with vendors and other projects that they're working with. Southern Boone is doing a project, you want to talk about that just a little bit, Tim?
Sure, sure. Southern Boone's doing a very similar project, uh, they're working with Coach here, they're taking new track, uh, getting new football surface. And so that just recently bid here last, a couple of months ago, so, uh, Chris is using the numbers on, on that project. Basically the, the unit prices for this project, so it feels pretty comfortable there. Uh, we just recently bid, Chris wasn't involved in this, but we were, uh, on Tolton High School in Cluggett. And so we're getting numbers back on that, and they're falling in line with what we anticipated. So, uh, while we can't project what the future market holds, uh, we do have a track record on past projects that we've recently did uh, just in the last few months that were going off of, it gives us a good indication. We've also talked to the turf suppliers, uh, that supply the turf for this project or for a project like this, uh, to see if they see any fluctuations coming up. And so we're kind of using those, uh, those numbers as well to generate this budget number.
And Chris, it kind of said that, as far as the turf goes, it's been already stable, it hasn't been really subject to inflationary forces.
It has, it's been pretty, yeah, it, it had jumped some time ago, but it's been pretty, pretty consistent here lately.
So if it passes in April, um, how quickly would we be able to order, or is this a summer 2024 project?
Right now, Chris is telling us of summer 2024.
Correct, and we could, we could get it out there. Uh, the problem is, once you go through April, uh, by having the design plans done, you bid it, you get construction, what you do is you lose that football season. And obviously I don't think we want to lose the fall season of '23, I might not have the home, so what we do is we come back into the spring, uh, probably after the track season, uh, and then do it during the summer, and then have it completely open and operational, uh, ahead of football season. So the football team can, first day of practice, they're on this field, so they don't lose any days, uh, with, with the construction we get into over the summer. So that, um, waiting between track and, and football, so, uh, there's no, no sports to miss out.
Would it be, this may be a dumb question, not realistic, but would it be smart to try to secure the material, like to purchase the turf? Uh, it, it just, I'm thinking about, I mean, things tend to go down in price.
I mean, that's, I think that's something we can talk, I mean, we, we can talk to turf suppliers and see what we anticipate. Uh, and then, um, the issue with that is how we bid this typically is you bid it to a contractor, and I guess we, if we, if we bid it out like that, uh, uh, you typically would have a, a contractor who installs turf projects. So they're, they purchase the turf and they install it, but they also do the groundwork, the site work, uh, they work with subcontractors on the asphalt. So they're, they're projecting what those numbers are going to be next summer. And obviously if they have to project what those numbers are, we're going to hold them to it, they're going to project high. And so we don't necessarily gain too much by doing, having them do that.
Well, couldn't we request them to break out material labor separately? I'm just wondering, I mean, rather than some sort of unit type cost.
Sure, uh, I think we could potentially look at that. Uh, we haven't done it that way, but that doesn't mean we can't take a look and see if it makes sense.
Sure. I just, I mean, it would be sad to have, you know, the money sitting aside and something happens, it's about 20% and then trouble.
We kind of had that experience, that's why.
Sure, okay, I understand, I understand. Yeah, and, and, and these turf manufacturers, they're all out of, out of Georgia. Every, every one of them is in a small radius in, in Georgia, and they have massive warehouse. So it wouldn't be crazy for them to, you know, purchase product and have them store product for us, uh, onsite until next summer. I mean, we do that in one of our, one of our big projects over the last time. You know, we're talking about having them keep it onsite for eight to 10 months as opposed to two to four. So I don't think that's meaning I would, I'd, uh, you know, unordained if that possible.
Does anybody else have anything? Sidney Lee? Rachel, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for everything.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Dr. Rob, your strategic planning and Dessie.
All right, um, a lot of strategic planning to do because Dessie has come out with a, uh, some new scoring guide for school districts. And, um, good news, let's start with good news. We are accredited, it's a pilot year. Um, they're starting to collect data from assessments that, uh, have changed over the years, have, uh, been pulled back during our pandemic years, have come back, some of them and not all of them. Yes, the accreditation of schools and the accountability and assessment has been going on since 1978. And it, it makes about a, a whole list going all the way down this page from 1978 to 2020 on the different incarnations and things that they have done, um, to try to give schools an indication and some things that they shouldn't measure. These are data points that they try to, um, accredit schools, and they have to do by state statute. And so we find ourselves in a position where we're adjusting to a new scoring guide, and so are all the schools in the, in the, uh, in the state. It's more difficult to achieve a high score because it's new, it's more difficult because they've changed it, and they've moved the target a little bit here and there. But it's still all about schools. Um, I expect our, our scores, like, has happened with the last incarnation with, with Enset 5, to go up over time. Nearly every school district was setting up in that 92, about, about 85 to 100 range, um, before Enset 5 went out because they've done so many different changes to it and schools adjust to that. Good news is we're not undercredited, but I do expect our scores to go up over time. And as we adjust to this new scoring guide, our conference range goes from about 68.7 to 82.2. And we, I have a little dispute with Dessie right now on where our score is, they're saying 70.2, I'm saying 72.2. Um, we've corrected them once already, and so we're still going at them, and even as, as of today, Carrie Updegrove and I, um, looking at the data we uploaded and saying that we should have two more points there, so. I was on the phone with them, and so was Carrie Updegrove, our data coordinator, um, wondering why we were scored where we were on a particular item. But we are doing well in some particular areas. One is continuous improvement. Will require a Dessie Climate and Culture Survey that'll go out to parents, it's going to go out to, um, our teachers. It's going to give us some data to say, hey, what can we improve? That is a piece that is going to be part of that assessment, and, um, we'll use that to inform our new school improvement plan. Um, we're doing well, uh, we could do better, uh, in some regards with our attendance. We have about 85% of our kids here, 90% of the time are better. We are doing well with our career academic plans, we're out there above the state average on attendance, even though I think we could do a little better with attendance. We need our, our parents to understand kids need to be in school, and sometimes we're fighting that. Isn't that right, so many principles? So we're, we're trying to have a conversation with parents about kids learning when they're in school on a regular basis. About 60% of our students are earning college and career readiness as measured by advanced placement, dual credit, uh, industry-recognized credentials. And our graduation, uh, rate is above the state average. So we are getting kids through our system. Um, we're seeing, uh, a lot of kids, especially with our graduation follow-up, have a wide variety of interests. We have about 22% of our kids that are, this is the 21, 22 school year, about 22% of our kids are in two-year, uh, programs. Then you have about 32% are going to four-year programs, and about another third are going to employment. Uh, 11% during that year went to the military. So kids are finding a path that they want to be on, and, um, uh, about half of our students roughly are entering the workforce after, after high school. I think that's just also indicative of, of opportunities for kids. Uh, Amy and I were having a discussion about this, about there are kids that come through our high school and pick up pretty well-paying jobs right out of high school. It's like, sorry, Amy, I'm going to put your, put you on the spot for a minute, but hopefully you don't care me talking about Mandy. Mandy was working for Como Connect, and what, what's her title?
She's a marketing and communication specialist.
And that's right out of high school. So, I mean, you know, I don't think, um, Amy is, Amy's daughter, Mandy, is necessarily an outlier, but we have a lot of kids that really fully engage in what we offer and walk right out and start jobs, start significant jobs, start careers. So I think the opportunities are there. I think the engagement of all of our students is not, for a wide variety of reasons. But we can work on that, and we can continue to try to, to earn that engagement for kids. Uh, we are seeing learning loss, and I, and I think that's significant. I think it's a little bit of a carryover from the pandemic, that was the first year. We still had some quarantining going on, we still had some people that were out sick. People were starting to get used to having their kids in school all the time, we were still getting some mixed messages from the health department in 21, 22. And we are seeing some learning loss, particularly in math, and, and. we are seeing some learning loss, particularly in math and English, basically across all subject areas. Probably the thing that I did want to point out, and it's in your report there as we kind of look at this, is that, you know, we're not scoring where we want to. And I don't think anybody would say that we are. But we are doing something about it. We are doing something about it. I think there are new counselors, Jolene and Bridget. They are actively working. I talked to them today and we had talked a few months before this, even before we got the score, we knew these things were happening. So when we brought in the Root Ed Counselor with Jolene, when we brought in Bridget, we really kind of talked to them about, you know, those college and career ready assessments, which are the ACT, the work keys, the things that the state is looking at to say a kid is, is ready to go on with their life and is an indicator of success, a success-ready piece. We also, I know, at the high school and the elementary and middle school are looking at the assessments that the state is using with us and how do we incentivize? What do I always say, Ms. Peddige? Sheet cake. Yeah. If the sheet cake works, let's go and have sheet cake for the elementary when they get done with their test. So, you know, sometimes it's just easy incentives. And I think at the high school, they're saying what? They want to earn a trip to...
It's different. Middle school kids want to go on a trip. High school kids don't want to miss school.
They don't miss.
So they want to go the other ways, but...
Yeah. So we're looking at ways to incentivize because I think at the end of the year, and this is something I've noticed throughout my career, we get to the end of the year, it's April, May, early May, and we're starting to look at testing. And kids have been working hard all, all year. And then they say, hey, now we want to give you this test from the state. Hooray for school. And I think it's really a hard sell sometimes at every school in the state to really get a good, a good read on where is this kid really? Because some of our internal assessments show a lot of growth. Some of our internal assessments show kids reading on grade level. These are aligned with the state assessments. But I think just the very nature of it sometimes presents a challenge to, to us to say, we're going to do this one-off test. And boy, if you don't do well on it, you must not be learning. And I just don't believe that because I see too much good work going on by our teachers to believe that. A lot of good work in title, a lot of good work in the classroom and our vocationals. I mean, there's just a lot going on. We do struggle with getting some students to attend regularly. I know both of our principals have been working with juvenile, they've been working with law enforcement, they've been working with parents. I could walk in on any day and see our principal and say, yeah, I've got a couple of parent meetings this afternoon. You know, so they're, boy, they've got some first thing in the morning. Ms. Matters blinking her eyes hard on that one. It's like, we're trying to have that communication that when kids are in school, they are learning. But we are in constant communication and using our local resources and they've been helpful to us. And we've been developing those relationships with them so that we can all work together. We directed a lot of our ESR funds toward learning loss, toward math and this particular English language arts, any class that kids need to pass. We've got, that's going on in a targeted way at the elementary and also at the high school. So there, you will see teachers and you will see kids after school and teachers being paid to do this so that we can help kids do the lessons we need them to do so that they learn. And we've started this, this has been going on almost a year now, when we first solved the problem. What's that? Four years for Ms. Matters. So, but, you know, using our ESR funds, it's new. We're making sure that's directed there. We're continuing to align instruction. We had an meeting not too long ago and Ms. Matters says, well, I've got this class, this class, this class. I'm seeing the Missouri learning standards getting aligned and looking at curriculums and making sure we're targeting the right things that are being taught in class. But it does show up on state assessments. It's not about just teaching to the test. It's about responding to what the state is holding us accountable for. We also have a new literacy training. Ms. Peddige, do you want to talk about that briefly on how that's going? That's been going on this year?
Yeah, we're finished. We just finished our last onsite training this month and then the teachers are finishing up their online training. They've got, I mean, these portfolios they've created are 75 to 100 pages long of just analyzing student data, reading progress. They put a lot of work. It was a college course. And so the amount of work and the amount of information gained has been tremendous.
And we were the last ones to do that, right?
No.
No, we were one of the first ones.
We have every teacher in our building will be letter trained. And that is not at every district. That is a recent improvement.
We jumped right on that, got involved with Desi and got us right to the forefront of that training. So, you know, what I say when these scores are released, we're not a C minus school at all. It is a new system. You know, because you look at 70, you say we're a C minus school. We're not. Our school is similar to many other schools and you can kind of see that breakdown of just how many schools kind of fall into that. You've got 237 schools in the state, roughly a little over, right around 550 schools that are scoring in the 70s, about 162 in the 80s, 95 are in the 60s, and 18 of them are in the 50s. So you've got, you almost have a bell curve going on there. That's exactly what's going on. But I think the right things are being put in front of our kids. We have great teachers. There's no comparison between the old system and this new one, not really. And I think we just need to keep working on those things and using the data that's going to come in in our survey data and also using our own ideas about getting kids engaged so that when these, these measures come up and they're, they make it to that actual score sheet that we're getting the points we deserve because I think a lot of the right work is going on. We do budget quite a bit more than normal than what we would just have to statutorily to professional development. We're always looking for opportunities to help our teachers be better and investing in them. And just, you know, here's the thing I look at. If a kid comes into our school district, I, I think we can say without a doubt, if they're here regularly and they're going from grade to level to grade level, they are not regressing. I don't think we have any data that would tell us a kid comes into kindergarten and they're still the same when they hit fifth grade. That it's just not happening. You know, they all learn, but kids, we have to remember, learn at different rates. And, you know, some things are going to engage a kid and some things are not. And it's up to us to figure those things out. I think the intervention we put in place and the elementary has actually expanded their intervention efforts and they've been having some discussions throughout PD. Anything you want to say on that, Ms. Peddige?
I don't know, just the intervention after school. And then we've also looking at like an intervention RTI, but like what I need for kids at the end of every, every school day next year, we'll implement that.
That's, that's right in line with, with theory and things that have been in place for probably 20 years or more. It's kind of the check and connect or check and check out. You know, if kids aren't getting the feedback that they need to be successful, that we're giving them that feedback and in a way that's structured and makes an impact on them. What questions can I answer for you? There is also an example of our, the last Desi climate and culture survey that came out was with MSET IV, so it's a further back. But it is based, this assessment is based on, who has editing rights? Somebody is messing with my stuff. I see it. Or I did it. It's act, that is very similar to the one that we'll be sending out. But they just, just before this meeting today, sent me the links to the new one from Desi. So I got to look that over and make sure I get that out to parents and to staff and faculty. And then they'll give us that data back. And it will do similar, be similar to the one that I gave you a link on. So you could kind of get a look at that. And I don't think that comes at any cost to us. Thank goodness. I don't want to pay another bill. And that's all there.
Anybody got anything? All right. You got your building administrators' reports that are on here. Does anybody have any questions for them? Or do you all want to highlight anything? Nancy needs to highlight. Jason needs to highlight. You all probably need to highlight really.
Oh, do you want us to really talk now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Sorry. Yes, our Special Olympic group, one of our, one of our two teams scored well enough that they are going to go to state. It is going to be a weekend trip. They're going to stay in the hotel. We're going to make it. It's going to be good. Anna is all excited about it. Thank goodness. And so we're very excited about the, the possibilities of things going on with that. So.
Got a few things I'll highlight. First thing, I got the DEXA results back for you guys. Didn't get it back till yesterday, so I put that in there. We had six members qualify for the international conference, which is in Orlando, Florida. Logan Petrie, Kevin Stockwell, Sarah Geiman, Ashlyn McCoy, Tyler Barrett, and Jackson Bailey qualified for the international, which is in Orlando. We also had the spring sports numbers on there. We had a lot of kids participating. Golf took a big jump in numbers this year. They're up to 14. I was out there today and saw them. A lot of kids out there golfing, a lot of young kids, a lot of freshmen. They got a really good group of freshmen that I expect really big things out of here in the next few years. And then our girls' basketball team this past week also won state, so that was pretty cool as well.
We're going to get that.
Save it for last.
Kind of a, kind of a big thing.
Got a lot of cool things coming of that, too. A lot of, lot of things you'll see coming up here in the next few weeks or next month or so. We get to go meet the governor on April 13.
13.
April 13.
You got this permogram thing going.
Yeah. We got to meet with Jostens today on rings, on state championship rings. So that was really cool for the kids to design those state championship rings. And then we get to go to the city on April 10th and they're going to do a little ceremony for us and give us the keys to the city. So a lot of cool things.
We've got lots of cool things going on in the elementary, too. They finished the Rockwall this evening. We had a couple of dads and grandparents up there and that is finally done in the pallets and everything will be gone in the morning. So I'm sure Daniel is happy, too, because I'll quit talking about it. We had teachers complete their letters training. We have donuts for dads next week, getting ready for open house and kindergarten screening. We've got 17 signed up so far. So getting ready. Lots of stuff coming up.
New to my board report, and it's not in there, but today, I think there was 25 kids from Fortuna, or Fortuna, Latham, St. Andrews, Clarksburg, Lutheran, Zion, and there. I think there was one homeschool kid that had come in today to view our school, go through it, lots of questions, had lunch with them, were shown around by a group of our NHS kids and my two hall monitors, as they've proclaimed themselves. I didn't name them that, but they've named themselves that, who are now doing morning announcements for me. So lots of interest. I had, I was listening to a conversation of one group. When they first came in the, the building, they were all in a group and some of them had on some blue sweatshirts. I won't say what school that's from, but they had on some blue sweatshirts, had a horse on it. And they said, yeah, this, we're not really even going to look because this is where we're going. And then about two and a half hours later, after they'd spent quite a bit of time with us, they were filling out some schedules and some of the kids were going, yeah, I thought I wanted to go there, but this looks pretty good here. And so that was, that was put together by Jolene and Bridget. They all walked out of the building with the Cardinals shirt that they made themselves in our print shop with Janay. So I think that was like icing on the cake. They looked pretty good. Things are going well. We're, we're moving forward. It's fourth quarter. This first week of fourth quarter, moving forward with that. So things are going well. They're very pleased. And there was this guy in my building who went to this game and, you know, they did pretty well. I get to work next to him every day.
Do we not have anything in old business?
We're not.
Have you ever? Just make sure it wasn't overseas. Is there new business here? Look over the open green. If anybody got any concerns or sort of thing, they can get more type of food.
I had the chicken patty today, mashed potatoes and gravy and green beans with onions in them. And my spot checks, I always get fed and I mean, the kids are eating. So we had breakfast this morning. It was a bagel with... Yes, it was good.
Last Thursday was biscuits and gravy.
They had, yep, they had put extra food, fresh fruits out there for the kids. All I had to do was ask. Say, hey, can we bring that back? Covid's over? Yeah, we'll roll it out. I think the kids are responsible over that. I have a few checkers for you moms that talk to me now and then, let me know if it's good, better. I've been very satisfied so far. I eat there. I'm not always the best source because I ate an army chow as too. So there you go. But I think it's good. I don't know. I think that I got with them.
Maybe Phil has concerns for anybody?
I'm still hearing complaints, but just me.
Anything specific?
Oh, it's been a few months ago. I had a parent talk about how the food was not good. And I've heard several, of course, I have a daughter in high school. I've heard several students complaining about food, so.
Certain dishes, sir?
In general, I'd say. I'm not saying, I mean, I don't eat up there, so I can't personally say myself. I'm just repeating what.
They'd worked on the survey of students a while back. I could ask them to come back on that and see what kids like and what they don't like. And so if they were doing that at one point, I could probably remind them of that. I'll tell you what, I got the worst was during Covid. That was the worst. From supply to styrofoam trays to little bowls to...
To help.
To help, yeah. It was not good. But I think everybody was pretty happy.
It's just yearly rate?
It is.
Well, it goes till 2024.
Right. Next week.
Well, I'll make a motion to stay with OPA for the next school year.
Second?
Second by Patsy. All in favor? Pass this forward. So that's all there. So I guess I need to do this since he's gone. I'd rather make a motion to move into executive session, make compliance with 610 points, 021? Yes. To discuss bullet points three and 13 to include all administrators in education.
Second.
So second by Stephanie. Debs?
Yes.
Patsy?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And that's the end of the session.